I want to start the July 6th Board of Supervisors meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to do a roll call here. We have Bob Cooney, Susan Garrett, Mark Donovan, Martha Majeski, and Danielle Joanne present from the Board of Supervisors, and we have Lori Getz, our Township Manager, and Bill Brennan, our Township Solicitor. We did have executive session this evening before we started our meeting to discuss potential litigation, potential land acquisition, and personnel issues. Wow, we did all three. Okay, all right. We have a presentation of awards, the presentation of commendations to members of the Schuylkill Township Police Department. Chief Ryan.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Schuylkill Township Police Department's first commendation ceremony. Very happy and honored to be able to present these commendations tonight. I would like to thank the Board Supervisors and our Township Manager for your support in getting this program up and running, and for your continued support of our officers in the department. Our officers are out there every day, protecting and serving. Sometimes police work is routine, sometimes not so routine, not so ordinary. Sometimes what our officers do out there is extraordinary, and that's what we're here tonight to recognize, some of the extraordinary work that five of our officers have done, three separate incidents. But it's truly outstanding police work, saving lives, solving major crimes. So without further ado, I'll get started. Officers Mark McNelly and Rob Catcher, can you come on up? You can stand over here. So Officers Mark McNelly, Rob Catcher are going to be awarded the Life Saving Award, and these are the details of the job. On Sunday, May 1st, 2022, at 8:05 PM, Officers McNelly and Catcher were dispatched to a house on 200 Block, a meeting house lean, for a well-being check. A friend of the resident had contacted police regarding concerning text messages that he had received, and he was worried that his friend may harm himself. Upon arrival, Officers McNelly and Catcher noticed the front door was open, all the lights were on. After knocking, identifying themselves, and receiving no answer, they proceeded to the second floor and found the resident lying on the bed under the covers and pillows with a cord wrapped around his neck multiple times. The resident's neck was bright red and starting to turn purple. Officers McNelly and Catcher immediately began life-saving efforts by removing the cord from his neck and helping him, helping to revive him. The resident had also admitted to taking a large number of pills and that he wanted to kill himself. Medical professionals arrived on scene, transported the resident to the hospital where he received the help that he needed. Officers also followed up by checking on the resident later in the night and learning that he was speaking with crisis intervention specialists. Their quick response and life-saving efforts led directly to the resident's life being saved and him getting the help that he needed. Their actions were in the finest traditions of the Schuylkill Township Police Department. Congratulations. Could I have Sergeant Brian McCarthy, Officer Curtis Pons? All right. This, this job in particular was an outstanding job that spanned over the course of four years. The investigation was, was very intense, lasted a long time, a lot of time and effort put into this, resulted in a, in a successful, successful conclusion. Here's the details. On Thursday, May 3rd, 2018, the Schuylkill Township Police Department received a report of a theft from the Phoenixville Country Club. Information revealed that a bookkeeper had committed fraud by writing 12 checks totaling $47,000 to herself and spending the money on personal items. Sergeant McCarthy and Officer Pons initiated the investigation after waiting four months to receive all the financial records from the club, determined that the suspect had actually written 54 checks in the amount of $86,825. The suspect was charged on March 17th, 2019, despite being assured by the general manager that the bookkeeper was the only one involved. Sergeant McCarthy and Officer Pons continued their investigation and subsequently determined that another employee as well as the general manager were also involved in the theft, with a total of $147,000 from the club. After 10 search warrants, thousands of pages of financial records, four criminal complaints, and more than 400 hours of investigation, the suspect pled guilty on December 17th, 2021, and was subsequently charged, was sentenced on, subsequently sentenced on June 21st, 2022. This investigation was brought to a successful conclusion due to the perseverance, diligence, highly intelligent investigative work Sergeant Brian McCarthy and Nurse Officer Curtis Pons, as well as receiving assistance from multiple law enforcement partners, including Chester County detectives, the West Town East Ocean Regional Police Department, and the Newcastle County Police Department. These actions were in the finest traditions of the Schuylkill Township Police Department. Congratulations. And lastly, but certainly not least, Officer Mike Valia. Officer Valia will also be receiving a Life Saving Award. On September 26th, 2021, at 2:26 PM, you responded to the 600 Block Penny Packer Avenue for an EMS call. Information provided by County Radio was that there was a 39-year-old male in cardiac arrest. You arrived and met the patient's mother who advised that her son had collapsed on a staircase. Patient was unconscious, unresponsive, did not have pulse. Moved the patient from the staircase to the floor and immediately applied the AED, which advised to deliver a shock to the patient. At that time, other emergency responders arrived, including Valley Forge Fire Chief, began CPR. Patient did regain a heartbeat on the way to the hospital and subsequently made a full recovery, returned to her normal life. For your actions, you were recognized by the Chester County EMS Council with a clinical save award on May 18th of 2022. Your quick response, professionalism, and clear thinking, along with great teamwork, directly led to the resident surviving and being given a second chance at life. Your actions are in the finest traditions of the Schuylkill Township Police Department. Congratulations.
We're going to take a five-minute break, maybe a little bit longer than that. I know that you guys want to get some pictures and some photographs, so we are going to adjourn our meeting for five to 10 minutes until you're all done. Okay? Go ahead.
My name's Dave Valio. I'm very proud of my son this evening. I'm also very fortunate to have worked with Curtis and Sergeant. I'm a member of Phoenixville Country Club, and what they did for us really saved us financially. We were hurting, we're down through the recession, we lost $147,000, and I can't thank them enough, and I just want to make sure that that was in the record. Thank you for all your help.
Thank you. Are you ready? Okay. Great. Our meeting is back in session after all of the photographs, and I want to congratulate all of our recipients, award recipients. Moving on, can we close that door, or is that open for a reason? Moving on to the consent agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors, May 11th, 2022, May 19th, 2022, and June 16th, 2022 business meeting. Acceptance of reports, all departmental, committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of June 2022. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second? Any comments or questions from the board?
Can I abstain in part and approve in part? I wasn't here for May and for the May 11th and May 19th. Or I can just abstain?
Let's see, I was also not there for the, which, which one was the one I wasn't for? I had COVID on the May 18th, so the 19th, yeah. I wasn't there for the May 19th one.
It's not just a quorum on each, it doesn't matter.
Okay, cool.
But you know what?
Do we have to approve them?
You're going to need to do them separately.
I am going to need to do them separately.
You're going to need to do all three separately.
All right.
That, that motion's abandoned.
All right, let me, let's rephrase this one. Acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors for May 11th, 2022. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second your motion.
Okay, you can do that even though she can't?
Second your motion signal.
Okay, okay. All right. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so you have Bob, Susan, and Martha approving that, and Mark and Danielle can't.
Yep.
Okay. Acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors for May 19th, 2022. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second? All those in favor? Aye. Again, that was Susan, Bob, and me. Okay. Acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors for June 16th, 2022 business meeting. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's Danielle.
Yep, and Susan and Bob were both absent.
Yes, and the two of you have to abstain. Okay, all right, we're all straight on that part. Okay. Acceptance of reports, all departmental, committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of June 2022. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. The Treasurer's Report and Payment of Bills for the period ending June 30th, 2022. Consideration of Acceptance of the Treasurer's Report. Do you want to do that?
Yes, we can. I'm just going to explain.
Okay. Consider the Acceptance of the Treasurer's Report and the approval to pay the bills. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Lori?
So the Treasurer's Report has a little caveat to it. This month, we did not receive the Tax Collector's monthly report in time to do the bank reconciliation, so those numbers are not reflected. So the tax checking account on the Treasurer's Report is only through May 31st. With the holiday, we just didn't get his report in time. So the Treasurer's Report will end up being amended, but based on the report for June 30th, 2022, ignoring the fact that the, the tax checking account has not been updated through June 30th, we're showing a general fund balance of about 5 point, 5.1 million. Again, it's not going to accurately reflect this month over last month, but as of June 30th, we're showing about 38% of expenditures, 63% of our revenue in. And the bills have been reviewed and are recommended for payment.
Any comments or questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two-minute reports for liaisons. Bob, do you have anything?
All's going well. Nothing to report.
Okay, Susan?
Yeah, nothing to report.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, I always do. Something from PRPC. The Odessa property over on, let's see, Township Line and Mauer, I think, there was a consistence review of that. It's generally consistent with land use. The reason I bring it up is because they have a lot of inconsistencies in terms of the goals of the region, so they have a lot of skinny streets and dead-end alleys where residents are opening up, so that's a, that's a fun one in Phoenixville. Let's see, I have other things.
Is that Phoenixville or East Pikeville?
It's in Phoenixville. Yeah. Charleston has a new Township Manager as of yesterday. I don't know their name. They did not mention the name, but.
Linda retired.
Yeah.
She's still on part-time.
Oh, okay. Do you know who it is?
I do not.
Yeah, they mentioned they had one, they, they mentioned they were bringing on the new Township Manager yesterday, as of yesterday though, so that's a, that's a fun thing. Phoenixville, of course, First Friday is closing Bridge Street. Let's see, they just have First Friday. They put their closing Bridge Street every weekend until Labor Day.
Oh, so it's not going through November?
No, it's going through Labor Day. There was, there were complaints from some business owners and from some residents, and so they shortened it as a trial run this year again to see how it goes and if the, maybe they'll expand it again, but maybe not. So that's only through Labor Day. It'll be memorial through Labor Day. Let's see. West Vincent mentioned something that was relevant to the latest EAC meeting. The Girl Scouts were planting pollinator gardens over there, so if we wanted to look into working with a local organization, I mean, there's, there's other places doing that for the Bee City stuff that was mentioning the EAC.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So I thought that was a thing.
Who was that, the local Girl Scouts?
Uh, West Vincent's Girl Scouts, some, some Girl Scout troops. Yeah, so that would be an interesting thing if we're doing that. And they're putting up a new public safety building on that, on their municipal property. So there was something from the May meeting I didn't bring up. Phoenixville, Phoenixville surprised us by mentioning that the Northern Relief Route is dead. So if you've been looking forward to the Northern Relief Route ever being completed, Phoenixville cut it out of their plans apparently a few years ago and forgot to tell us, so.
Is that the one that went from?
Up Township Line, or Uptownship Line and up to Route 29 through the north side of Phoenixville. So, yeah.
That's a shame.
They killed that off without mentioning it. No, the, the actual, like, cars coming down 724, they go north through 20 to 29 that way to relieve some of the traffic coming down Bridge and all of that fun stuff. So I don't know, I don't know.
It was, it was a bypass that, that.
But they've approved a lot of.
Was it, was this supposed to be a state bridge?
I think so. It's, it's hard to say because.
But it was approved like back in the 1980s?
Yeah, and it's, yeah, and they kind of, well, they've approved so much development along that route that it kind of made it impossible to complete the route, so they kind of scrapped it without mentioning. By the way, we, we noticed that this is now scrapped. So, I mean, there, there's, the rest of the regional partners were not very happy about that.
Yeah.
And I understand, I understand why. So the, so the question here is whether or not there's any interest in pushing to find an alternate route to relieve traffic off 724 and 23. And that'll be up for Danielle, because I'm no longer on the PRPC. So that'll be, do we want, how much, how much energy do we, energy do we want to direct that way? So we've got to think about that, if not necessarily tonight, but we need to think about that before, like, do we want to put a bunch of energy into finding, having a thorough cough and et cetera, find, find a new way around? So, yeah.
Especially since, as Mark and I were just discussing, the benefit of that route seems to have, would have been, would have been to the benefit of East Pikeville more than Schuylkill Township. I think our traffic issues are more coming from New Prussia and trying to find a way.
It doesn't necessarily relieve our traffic, but it might relieve traffic in the region, so.
Just completed the purpose of the collaborative planning that the, the regional planning purpose there to have if one of the partners abandons one of those agreed upon.
Yeah.
I don't know that it was ever agreed upon that.
It was kind of like a handshake agreement, not like a written down, like, we're all going to do this, but like, everybody was planning towards it and it kind of just died on the vine. Yeah. Without anybody noticing.
That's a shame.
But I've got a full briefing remark on, and we both attended last meeting, so I will be prepared to provide before this is moved forward.
Okay, good. Thank you. The Historical Commission did not meet this month, and I did brief everyone on an update for the Open Space Commission during our executive session. The one thing I did want to mention, and I kind of talked about it a little bit during our break, the Domestic Violence Center of Chester County has planted a tree on our property. Is that better, Danielle, with the big smile, big smile on my face? They have planted a tree on our property last year, and it's kind of grown. Their whole movement of planting trees has kind of grown throughout the county, and they want to hold another event here in, it'll actually be held on September 30th. And they want to light the tree up for the entire, in purple for the entire month of October for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. They want to, Amelia Rayburn from the Domestic Violence Center, she would like to be on our agenda for next month's board meeting. She wants to talk about the event and everything that she would like to do. So I was wondering if you could put that on our agenda. That's pretty much all I have. So, anybody else? All right. Lori?
I do not have anything that's not an agenda item tonight.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Well, I have a lot of agenda items, so don't get too excited.
Okay, Chief, do you have anything? Can, if you could come up to the microphone so that he can record you, that would be great.
So just the monthly activity report for June. I just wanted to see if you had any questions on that, on that report.
Nothing for me.
Yep.
Just, I do have a question. Since we were talking about domestic violence, when you have a domestic dispute, are there any sort of resources that we're providing? I'm just wondering if the, you know, do the department do anything to provide any sort of, you know, information or resources to the more involved in domestic disputes?
We do, we have a packet that we present, has all the information for resources and centers in Chester County and the surrounding area that they can reach out to. So we do, we do provide that.
And, and just to add to that, and I only know this just because I've gotten very close with this woman from the Domestic Violence Center of Chester County. They offer a training program for police officers, and all of our officers have taken it. It's called the Lethality Assessment Program. I don't really know a whole lot of details about it, but evidently officers that have taken this, this class or done this program, they've had a better success rate in not having deaths in their area because of this. So is that, is that the best way to put it?
Yeah, it gives them, it gives them the tools that they need to evaluate a situation a lot better.
Yeah.
Things to look for.
And, and they're in constant contact with the Domestic Violence Center. So it's something that's a really good thing for our community and our officers, too. I didn't mean to like step on your toes there. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions?
Chief, we have deer-related, doubled for this time, this year compared to last year. Most of these auto-related accidents, or are they?
So a lot of those are, like, a deer-related incident could be that we find a deer on the side of the road or we get a call for, not necessarily the car is gone, but the deer may be lying on the side of the road. Yeah, most of them are vehicle-related.
Okay.
A lot of times the vehicle's not there when we get there.
I noticed that the numbers are way up along Valley Park, where I'm in, in our neighborhood, and we've seen them all over the place. I mean, the Evin Flow goes up and down. They had chronic waste disease go through Kimbryt a couple of years ago, knocked a ton of them out. Looks like the numbers are climbing again.
Yeah. Thankfully, nothing too serious, though. No, no serious accidents that resulted in, you know, a bad injury.
I think, I don't know how long ago it was, we had an accident on, was it Pothouse in front of the Stoke Man? Where somebody hit one on a motorcycle, going back maybe 12 years ago, 15 years ago.
Lucky coyotes are up too, right?
And foxes?
Certainly are.
Coyotes, you'd think would help balance things out with nature having a predator now, but. Okay. That was it.
Okay.
The only other thing I had to report was we had a successful, our first cones with the cop event, and it went off really well. Thanks for those that were able to attend. We wound up having to use parking across the street. We had so many people here. So it was, it was a great event. We're looking to expand on it and do something next year, maybe sooner.
Yeah, I just, I was talking to Jim Hennessy. He was thinking about having one in fall, maybe.
Yeah.
That's great. That's awesome. Hopefully I'll make it to this one this time.
So I have.
Okay, thank you. Since Paul is not here for his two-minute report, I'll just move on here to board discussion items. Old business, discussion on meeting room technology. Do you want me to do this one at a time?
Yeah.
Okay. Potential motion to approve the renewal of the contract with AVT Technologies for meeting recordings dated June 13th, 2022 in the amount of $6,935. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Lori?
So this is the renewal for the meeting recordings that we have. So this is effective, it starts July 1st. This is just the contract renewal. And it also includes the municipal meeting hosting. That's where all of our meetings get posted to, where the residents can go back and watch the videos. We had talked a couple of months back about looking into updating our equipment in here and giving us the ability to record these ourselves and manage it that way, but we got a quote. It was very expensive, and now that we're talking about potential, looking into other building renovations, I think it would be a better idea to wait and do that all at one time, rather than kind of doing something now that might not fit in with whatever future plans we come up with. And they do a great job, and it makes my life easier, so I'm in full support of it.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The potential motion to approve the purchase of replacement microphones per AVT Technology Proposal dated June 24th, 2022, in the amount of $24,216. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Lori?
So they make my lives, my life easier by reporting the meetings for us, and we make their lives difficult by having microphones that don't work that well. So we've been researching this, and this was something that we had looked into several months back as well, and we held off on it because, again, we were talking about, well, maybe instead of buying just the microphones, we update everything in the room. But again, we should wait on the rest of it, but the microphones are dying. And now I talked to them about, would it be better to just replace, you know, these as they go out? But these are the original ones that we bought, like, 15, 12, 15, maybe even longer years ago.
You've been here as long as I've been here?
Yeah.
And that's 2011, so it may even be longer than that?
I remember before that.
Yeah. So, and these, the ones that they're.
You were here before that, before that, Bill?
But his memory stops in 2011 when you started.
Oh, okay.
So, so they quoted us some. So, so they quoted us some updated microphones, they're the nice goose neck ones that are wireless that we can just charge in the closet here. Right now with these, we have to, there are literally like rechargeable Duracell batteries in there that we have to put into a little thing every day before the meetings to make sure that they work, and sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. So, the benefit of doing this now, this system that they quoted us, will work seamlessly to any future improvements we do in this room, because these are the ones that, they'll communicate well with any other equipment that we ultimately install later as we start doing some additional renovations and making improvements in the building.
And Sean's over there shaking his head, going, yes, yes.
I was given permission to put him on the hot seat about the microphones today when I talked to them. It is gonna, oh, sorry, go ahead. That, we're looking at a, the other issue is, everything takes so long to get right now, so we're looking at probably a several-month lead time, so that's why I'm recommending we do this now, because if we're gonna try to get them before these continue to die, and then we have issues with the recordings and you can't hear, you can't hear, we should put, put the order in now, lock in the pricing so it doesn't continue to go up. We've already seen an increase. This is CoStar's pricing, so it is less than anybody else, you know, it's, it's less than street pricing.
How many mics do we get for this?
Yeah, ten.
Just out of curiosity.
Ten plus a public.
Thanks.
Is there, do these just not work, was there an opportunity to either sell or go make them when you get the replacement ones in?
We, you know what, that's a great question, and I, in fact, I meant to ask them if there was, if they had any suggestion on what we do with them when they, when we replace them. Some of them do not work, we're down two or three, we're down three now. That just happened recently, I don't know, do you guys do any recycle?
I was just gonna say, Sean, do you know if you recycle them or resell them?
We can do, like, e-recycling, but we're not gonna like resell.
Yeah, they're so, yeah.
We could potentially, you know?
Yeah.
Just like in the school, the school plays or something?
That's a great idea, yeah, we can certainly explore options of what to do with them.
Maybe check that before recycling them, yeah?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
Yeah. And for this, we had discussed before when we talked about the ARP funds, this was one of the categories that, that we had designated for that, so I would recommend we use the ARP funds to make this purchase.
Great, okay. Any more comments or questions from the board? Any public comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Update on Scan Tech, you know, this is great that you put this in here, because, I was actually gonna ask about it, because I know you've been struggling a little bit, so.
We've been struggling with a whole lot of things, yes.
Update on Scan Tech Record Digitalization Project.
Yes, so we got our, I finally got access to the portal that they set us up with, so I'm able now to get in there and see the records that they've scanned. So what's happening, it's taking a really long time to scan the records, because we had them start kind of with the most difficult ones, which is all the old minute books dating back to like, very far back. So, and they were, all of the minutes are taped into books on individual pages, so they are having to go through and scan page by page as if it's like a, like a regular book. So that is taking a really long time, and then I've given them very specific instructions on how I want them organized and named and all of that. But I did get access to the portal, and it's fantastic, it's actually how I was locating a lot of the documents for the things that we were discussing earlier. So it's, it's going well there, actually, they just reached out to schedule our second pickup, and that's gonna happen in the next two, in the next two weeks. We're actually pushing it back a little bit so that we can get some organizing done first. We have some filing that needs, that needs to be done, property files, but it's going slowly, but I'm very happy with the, the portal and the way that the documents are coming out. We are gonna have to do some renaming, but that's just kind of my nature of the way that our documents were stored before they took them. They weren't super well organized, so we're gonna have to do a bit of that on the backend and come up with our own naming conventions and that sort of thing. But, but it's gonna be very, once everything's in there, it's already so much easier. I was just kind of playing with it the other day, and the search capability is exactly as they promised me it was, so it's, it's going well, just going a lot slower than, than we expected.
Is there gonna be an opportunity, I think you could minute books and things that are really, really, you know, public records, obviously there are things with public records, but in the future, would you ever think about creating a portal that would provide public access to your apartment? It's like some county, county, you should go and you can look up property records and things like that.
Yeah.
Thinking might be of interest to someone.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, and in fact, we could do that, one of the other things I'll be eventually bringing to you all is an update to our website and making improvements to that, and we could, we could put all of the minutes right on the website, and people could just go right to our website and go back as far as they, as they want. We can't really do that on our, our current website would not really support that very well, but, but yeah, absolutely. And that would make it so easy, because we'd, we already have them, then.
Does that, how would that fit in with right to know? Would you separate what the public could have access to and?
Well, the minutes are all
Not, not what they, that's the wrong, I just worded that incorrectly.
Anything that maybe you seek in a right to know request, we could put on the website, this is public, that's why you can gather.
And in theory, that would maybe reduce some right to know requests, they can get themselves, I haven't really found that to work. I tried, experimented with that theory before, it doesn't really work all that well to actually reduce the requests, but, but yeah, I mean, that's all public information. They don't have to file a right to know for that.
Right.
It's just the process right now, because we don't have it out, if it was posted on the website, they wouldn't need to file a right to know. I think we only currently keep a year on our website?
No, no.
Oh, the ones we have? Oh, to like the thirties?
There could be some historical interest in that.
Absolutely, yeah.
You can think kids' school projects.
Yeah.
So I know that our chief had asked to have some records scanned, do they have those?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, so.
We're still on, we're still on the first pickup.
So would that be like a separate portal?
It's all the same system, we have to decide who wants and needs access to it, so he and I will.
Okay.
Like, I think that we paid, we paid upfront for two accesses, so I have one right now, and the company has one. So they, because it's one of the licenses, so they'll eventually, they'll transfer that to us, but right now they need the access to do, to put the documents into it. We can purchase more licenses, we didn't do it upfront because we didn't know at that point how many we were gonna need, who was gonna want it, what it was gonna look like, so we'll figure that out then, but yeah.
And with the limited capabilities, it's not worth having another one yet?
No.
Right.
Until we get everything in there?
No, exactly, so I'll be evaluating that to add, it's not a very expensive add, I just didn't wanna buy a whole bunch of licenses without knowing who was gonna do anything with them.
Yep.
And then, he may not wanna have
Exactly.
the public to have access.
Oh, and this would be separate, the public, no, the public would not get access to this system. I could just use this system to take those documents and put them somewhere that they could be public.
I see, okay.
No, the public would not get access to the system I'm referencing.
Access via
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I get it now, okay, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, I don't know, did anybody get their new Township News, the July Township News? There's, yeah, the, you know, the, they actually have a whole big article on, everybody, they're recommending that everybody do the Scan Tech
Yep.
digitizing, and, I'm like, that's why I was wondering, oh, is that why everything's going so slow? Because everybody's doing it, or did we get a, did we get a heads up?
I think we did have a bit of a leg up, we were a little bit early into it, but it is, I mean, they're suffering with the same issues that everybody else is with staffing issues, and we gave them a lot of documents, and, and yeah, they, they have a lot of other
Yeah, if it goes back to the thirties, I can imagine.
It, it's, it's a lot, and it's not, I mean, they took boxes and boxes and boxes, and there's plans, and there's all sorts of stuff mixed, mixed in, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you for that, I mean, I know it's a, you know, it's a big project.
Yeah, it's, it's good, though, it'll be so worth it in the end.
Good, that's great. Okay, moving on to new business. Consideration, approval of contract renewal with Redtail Restoration and Land Management LLC in the amount of ten thousand five hundred dollars for a contract period of July first, twenty twenty-two, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-three.
I'm sorry.
Should say twenty-three.
Thank you, June twenty twenty-three.
That was my typo.
I will make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Lori, do you want to comment on this?
Yes, this is the company that does our invasive plant management for our parks, and the EAC has recommended renewing their contract. That's, they didn't ask for an increase, their price only went up, I think, a dollar or two per hour, so. And I think they're doing a great job, and the EAC seems happy with them, and we've worked through some communication issues, I think we're
And didn't you say, the guy from the forestry, didn't you say that he thought they were doing a good job too when he went out to look at them?
Yes.
Okay, good, good, that's great.
Yeah.
That's really good to hear. Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, number two on our agenda, we are going to table this, from what I understand from Lori, we got some last-minute changes.
We were not expecting them, no.
And we were not expecting changes, last-minute changes, so this has been tabled to next month's agenda. So we're moving on to number three. Approval of the transfer from the General Fund to the Liquid Fuels Funds in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I'm sorry, one hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Did I say that right?
That's it.
Yep.
All right, I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Lori?
So this, when we filed with PENDOT our project approval application to do our paving program for this year, which gives us the authority to spend the liquid fuels money, we discovered that there was a clerical error when the equipment rental and snow removal contract was bid last, last calendar year. So the, the advertisement period, the public advertisement needed to be run for ten days, and it was only run for nine days. So because we were one day short, PENDOT will not let us spend liquid fuels money on the equipment rental contract. So, we caught it before we used any of the money for paving, but we did spend money for the equipment rental contract for snow removal early in the year. Now, we budget conservatively, so we have money to provide ourselves a buffer, so, you know, we're okay, but we, and there are no penalties with PENDOT, we're not in trouble, we just have to reimburse ourselves basically. So we, that's why we have to make the transfer from the General Fund into the Liquid Fuels Fund to remedy that. That money stays ours, it doesn't go away, PENDOT doesn't give us any less money next year because of it. We just have to right the wrong and report it as a clerical error, so when the auditors come in, they see that we caught it and we fixed it.
No loss of township funds?
No loss of township funds, and we can still use the liquid fuels money to purchase the materials. We just can't pay our equipment rental contract out of the money.
So that explains why it's only one hundred and twenty thousand as opposed to the full
That's right.
Yep.
Almost, what is it, three hundred?
Yep.
Thousand or whatever, whatever, two, you know what I'm not even gonna say, because I don't remember off the top of my head.
Yes, that's right, it's, and, and that's why, and, and we generally only use liquid fuels money for paving. So our project is approved now, we can move ahead with our paving, we did, when we discovered this, we did delay it, that's why we did, we ended up doing the curbing project first, because we wanted to make sure we figured this out before we moved forward with it. But we only, for paving, generally use liquid fuels money anyway for materials, so it's really not that big of a problem. It was really just the snow removal that we had paid for it out of, and maybe some other projects that we might have done. But at this point, we had cut things out already because of the price of asphalt, so, you know, it's, it's an inconvenience, but it's not really gonna cause that big of an issue.
Okay.
Is there any practices you're putting in place so that this won't happen in the future?
Um, yes, we will be triple checking the calendar days when we advertise. Unfortunately, it's just kind of one of those things where these requirements for the advertisements are very stringent and kind of outdated, but, yeah, it was just something that somebody miscounted on a, on a calendar when they wrote the dates and sent it to the newspaper, but, yeah.
Everybody has different advertisement requirements too.
Yes. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, motion's been made, it's been seconded, any more questions from the board? Any public comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion on Township Investments and Interest Rates. The potential motion to approve investing certain funds with the Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust.
Do we wanna just have Lori go over it first?
Mm-hmm, yep, I can do that. Yep.
Do you want me to make, do we want the motion, or do you want to just talk about it first?
Well, we can talk about it first, then, and that way you can decide if you want to make
Okay.
the motion or not, and then there is a separate resolution if you do decide
Okay.
that would need to be approved. So, this is something that Peter Bars and I have been working on, we went through and did an analysis on all of the interest rates that we're currently getting. They're all pretty low. Some of them have started to, I shouldn't even say some of them, we got a little bit of a bump on one of our banks recently.
From point oh one to point oh one.
Yeah. Yeah, point two five to point two eight.
Yes. So, Peter and I met with, so Pliget is, it's a trust that, it's an investment trust that is open only to local governments. So it's, the funds, they're, they're not a traditional bank, so they don't do any, they don't do any traditional lending, so they're able to offer us higher interest rates, because they're not, they're, they're purchasing, they're putting your money into investments that are approved by the state that are in the Act X regulations. So they're able to give us higher interest rates, and we're looking at anywhere from one point four four to two point seven eight in interest rates that we can get versus what we're currently getting of like, point, point one oh or point two five, like, so a pretty substantial difference because of the way that they do their investments versus our traditional banks. So what we did is we sat down, we went through each one of our bank accounts and identified, the thing that's a little bit different about these is, what we needed to look at is any money that we might not need to touch for a certain period of time. You get higher interest rates if you can set the money into an account and leave it alone for a couple of months. So we did the analysis, and I sent you all a spreadsheet, but if we invest, we targeted a couple of accounts that we could take the money, and we're not looking at closing accounts just yet, we're, we're looking first at investing the money to try to, to just make some additional interest income. And what we identified just on a couple of accounts that we targeted here, compared to what we are getting right now, we could, this calendar year, see an additional like one hundred and forty thousand dollars in interest just by making some of these changes and investing with this, with, with Pliget. So that's something that I would recommend we do and take advantage of the interest rates, and we just had a really great meeting with Pliget yesterday. They're, they come very highly recommended, a lot of other municipalities do this, and we're not talking, you know, this would be the first step. If we end up then closing some of our accounts, we may, if, if we decide that it looks like that's gonna be the prudent thing to do if we're gonna continue getting these interest rates. But right now, we're just looking to take some of the money from our accounts that we don't need to touch and move it over. However, some of these do have checking accounts that we can actually just get a much higher interest rate on as well. So we're gonna continue evaluating that, but the first step would be, you know, to give us the approval to make some of these investments, and Peter and I are gonna review it one more time before we move any money, and we would notify our, our current banks before we do that. But the first step would be to make the motion authorizing me to do this and to pass a resolution allowing us to become members, members essentially, we're really kind of buying into Pliget and naming me as an authorized signer, so that we can get started with filling out the documents.
Is that what this one is?
That's exactly what that one is, yeah.
All right, well, I, one hundred and forty thousand dollars?
This
In interest alone, just this, just this calendar year? I think this is a no-brainer, I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I think I got
Any comments or questions from the board?
Lori, any downsides? What's the worst case, that we're not gonna need any of this money for that period of time?
Yeah, well, and we, we did this analysis in a very conservative way, because that's just, you know, makes me, I'm kind of a nervous Nellie when it comes to it, but the longest, we only identified two accounts, and the longest term that we're talking about not touching the money is five months. So, yeah, and in that, in that time, we're talking another almost twenty-three thousand dollars that we, that we'll see in that time, and it comes right to us. And then at that point, we can decide, do you wanna reinvest it, do we just put it into our account, like, we transferred it at that time? That kind of holds your hand through the whole process.
And again, in the most recent issue of Township News, there's a whole article on Pliget.
Yeah, there's one with the new supervisor training.
Yeah.
I just, I guess I'm wondering, since it's been out there, is there a reason why we haven't done it before?
We just got too busy.
I don't think so, yeah. I don't think there's any, there's no real reason that I've discovered, and in fact, I actually asked EJ. No reason, just, we have, you know, he had invested in some other money market accounts.
The interest rates were higher then too.
The interest rates were higher, and now.
And these are CDs, and I think these might not have been as appealing back then, but now that the interest rates are low again.
Yeah.
And I think there were, there were fees for taking money out earlier.
That could.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't think they had the incremental, like, what is it, one, one month?
Yeah.
Two months?
Yeah.
Three months and five months or whatever?
Right. Yeah. And that's the thing, we were very strategic about the money that we identified here. Um, so, for instance, the, the money that we're, the five-month accounts that we're looking at, like, one of them is the municipal complex reserve fund.
Right.
And we would leave, you know, the amount that's budgeted in there for this year, leave that in the account, move what's not budgeted this year into this to make twenty-three thousand dollars in interest.
Right. What's the penalty, penalty if we did have catastrophic event and had to tap into it?
They actually said that they're, you know, they, if you absolutely need it, they'll work with you to do it, that there's not any significant
The ballpark of what rate we were getting and what we would get, and probably going from quarter to three percent or?
Yeah, that one's almost that, it's two point seven eight as of yesterday, and it was point five, point five, so if we put a million dollars in that, we're, we're looking at twenty, almost twenty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Great.
Quint upwind in the returns?
Yeah.
That's not bad.
Yeah. Now, the, and these are estimates, you know, we have to, we haven't contacted the banks yet, I wanted to see what your feelings were first on it before we did that, so the numbers might change, their rates change day to day, but they've only been going up, so.
So, uh, we're locked in for five months.
That's right.
So if the interest rate goes up and doubles next month, we're locked in for five months at that, at this rate.
We're locked in at what?
You can't get the new rate.
With that investment.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we put it up, one lump in or dollar cost average over time? What are your thoughts? Peter gave a recommendation, is the rates do look like they're climbing, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's only five months.
Yeah, and plus if we, yeah.
Well, the longer you don't, you get the higher interest rate, the longer you commit to not touching it.
So.
Right, but I mean, if we, do you wanna put it all in one lump, or some now, some next month, some, and is there a dollar amount minimum?
We have, we have a ladder plan on, yes, we have a stagger on different accounts, so like that one, we tried to pick the ones, all right, let's, let's, let's try to get these highest interest rates, so which accounts have mo, more money in them that we don't need? Like, we don't need to spend the municipal complex fund all this year, it's not budgeted for anyway.
Yeah.
So we cannot touch that, but then we identified some other accounts that we're gonna put in less, uh, you know, that gives us more freedom to touch the money if we need to. So we didn't lock anything up, number one, we didn't lock anything up that we might even in a catastrophe need to touch, um, 'cause we don't wanna do that. But we laddered on some other things, so if we did two months with this account, we're gonna do two months with this one, so that we
Okay.
are kind of spreading it out.
And unless, unless the rates start climbing at a quarter percent a month, then it's gonna balance out or better if you start now.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Any cop, public comment or questions? Our accountant, doesn't wanna have a comment there? Retired accountant? You could, I, we all know who you are, but if you could state your name for the record.
John Maras, Skookle Township, Meadow Brook Lane. Um, just looking at what you were discussing, Laura, uh, you were talking about the prime or reserve, was it PGIT prime?
Some of them are, yeah.
You know, just looking at it, because we could all Google this, and it was interesting because they do have a nice interest rate. And this one term says there's, there's two withdrawals per month. A minimum of a hundred thousand dollars, so what you're discussing is what's out there, and when you say, what's the penalty or what's the worst-case scenario, there's two withdrawals per month without that.
That's exactly right. And that's when certain accounts, that's why we chose um, this, the, the accounts that we identified for the Pliggett Prime ones are the ones that we thought, there might be enough, there might be a chance that we need it, but we can only write checks once a month anyway, so we don't need to access money.
Well, the only downside there, and it's not probably insured, unless you know that it's insured.
Oh, it is insured.
It's insured, okay.
Yes, it's insured.
I didn't see that on here, real quickly anyway, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, anything you get better interest on, rather than the regular banks around here,
Mm-hmm.
uh, as taxpayers and, and stakeholders of township, it's great, so, uh, appreciate it. Thank you, and thanks for the introduction again.
Thank you, John. All right, uh, motion has been made, or did we?
Yeah, it's made, we need to.
Yeah.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, and, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion on the Environmental Advisory Council member roster. A motion to accept the resignation of Steve Coons as a full member of the Environmental Advisory Council. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Lori? You, your name is on here, or Susan?
Any of us probably.
Um, I think they're just, um, Steve is kind of, um,
He wants to retire.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we're different when you say, he's just kind of taking more of a low-key role, and so they're just swapping things up on the board, on the commission.
They're moving an alternate member to a full member status. And he's gonna be the alternate member now.
Yes.
So he'll still be involved?
Yeah.
Yeah, he'll still be involved.
Exactly.
He's been involved, I think, like, since the
Since a long time.
Seventies or something, like, it's been a long, long time.
And he still actually wants to be involved.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah. Motion's been made, it's been seconded, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A motion to accept the resignation of Amanda Gensimer as an alternate member of the Environmental Advisory Council. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
And as Mark said, they're just moving.
They're just moving things around, so.
Exactly.
Um, any more comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
A motion to approve Amanda Gens- Gensimer as a full voting member with the term to expire December twenty twenty-two. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion to approve Steve Coons as an alternate member of the Environmental Advisory Council with the term to expire December twenty twenty-four. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolutions and ordinances. Approval of Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Two dash sixteen, Land Use Assumptions Report. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Lori?
So this is.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, did I go through all that real fast for you?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, good. Sorry about that.
I am good. Um, this is, uh, the Land Use Assumptions Report is related to the Transportation Impact B Schedule Study that we are doing. Um, this is just the next step, we had the public meeting for the Land Use Assumptions Report, this was the do-over, if you all remember that we had, we had to start the clock over again, so we, this was the second public hearing for this. Um, so we had this, uh, a couple weeks ago, so the next step is just for the board to accept it, and it was, um, in your Dropbox, there were no changes made from the one that was completed last year, except that it was updated with the twenty twenty census data.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Two dash seventeen, authorizing the Skookle Township to join the Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust and naming the Township Manager as the authorized sign, signer. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I think you kind of explained that already, so, does the board have any other questions? Does the public have any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We have nothing under subdivision and land development. Um, under additional business, discussion on agenda items for the upcoming workshop meeting.
Um, building improvements?
Yep.
Probably building improvements.
Um.
That's probably a good idea.
No, I mean, was the, you know, we've all discussed it and we've passed it.
Well, considering the fact that the ceiling collapsed over the weekend, I think it would be a very good, uh, a very good
Pipe standard.
Discussion.
Maybe it collapsed downstairs or upstairs, is it here?
Yep, in here.
No.
We've had several water leaks in the last.
Did you guys have any issues downstairs?
Yeah.
They had water too, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yes, I think we absolutely should put that on a workshop, I don't know, it's probably not, unless we wanna just have another general discussion on it. I'm not quite ready to, we don't, we haven't talked to an architect yet, we haven't done, we haven't gotten to any of that yet.
You're not ready, we don't need to do it right away.
Yeah, I would.
Do you need our people to get, to have, to talk to an architect, or?
Nope, we, we, we discussed that.
Discussion for easy, if you're not spending money.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. I was go, yes, I'm not spending any money, we're reaching out to architects to see what the next steps would be. Yeah. Um, so then we can bring that back absolutely to a workshop, um, I would say probably not, probably not July. And August, we, you're not going to be here in August, so that was part two of this discussion was, uh, for July, I do think for the workshop, we should discuss the, uh, the stormwater model ordinance.
Yeah.
We need to keep, uh, keep that moving, because we're going to have advertisement deadlines that we have to meet for that, because of it being an ordinance.
When, when's the due date for that?
Well, we have to adopt, so we've heard conflicting things, we have to ad- adopt by September thirtieth. We initially heard that as long as we were making progress on it and moving on it, that they weren't going to strictly enforce that, but then I went to, Paul and I attended one of the county's training sessions, and that was not the message I got there necessarily, so we should just try to, you know, try to meet the deadline.
Just for reference, when we did this back in twenty fourteen, it was kind of the same way.
I'm sure.
They were like, oh, it has to be approved by September thirtieth. And then they were like, oh, well, you know, as long as you do it by the end of the year, it's okay.
Well, and, and truthfully, seeing how, how the process has gone, just with them disseminating the in, the information to us, like, they're having difficulty as well, and it's not as quick of a process as, you know, for us having to meet this deadline, they don't seem to be moving super quickly.
Yeah, that was kind of how it was before.
Yeah. So that would be one of the things that I think that we should discuss, that I talked with Paul about for July. I'll put building improvements on, let me see where I get with architects, and then we can plan and see if that's maybe a September, so I guess the question is, do you wanna have in August, you're not going to?
I'm not gonna be here in August, but I mean, y'all can meet without me, you know?
I'll be around.
I didn't have anything.
I got nothing to do on a Thursday night.
You're talking about whether to have an August workshop?
Yeah. Yeah, if we have, I don't know if anybody has, we were gonna be coming up to budget after that.
If there's no topic, we don't need to have them.
So that was mine. Yeah, if anybody has anything specific.
Not unless something comes up between now and the August board meeting.
Yeah, so we can see.
When would the workshop be? The business workshop?
July twenty, I haven't been listing the workshops on.
Twenty-first.
Yeah, July twenty-first.
So we're trying to decide whether or not we have an August workshop?
Which would be August eighteenth.
Yeah, we're gonna have a July one, because Martha mentioned that she was gonna be on vacation, I'm away the beginning of that week. So I can be back for the workshop if we have it, otherwise we could cancel it.
We have to have one meeting a month.
The, yeah, and we have the business meeting.
These are just workshops, these are not business meetings, these are non-voting unless we absolutely desperately have to.
Yeah. We don't have to plan two meetings out, I just thought we had the opportunity, I didn't know if anybody else was have, gonna be away or on trips, or?
I'm here, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm here obviously team.
Okay.
The, the folly is, when would be the, I didn't actually have this, would be the, or the business meeting, and?
August third is the business meeting.
I will be on an airplane to France.
Okay.
Dropping my kids off to their grandparents' house.
They go fish.
And they live there.
Oh my gosh.
It's a long commute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll look at, and going there and flying back. At least, we, it's cheese for best of the deal.
All right.
I'll be on the airplane, so I won't be able, I won't be able to.
No problem, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So we have a topic for the July workshop evening.
Yep, and then August. I don't have anything planned for August, so I would say unless something comes up.
Okay.
We're, I don't know that the EAC meetings are on our township calendar, am I just missing one?
Uh, they might not.
Did they fall off?
I'm not seeing.
Maybe they expired?
They could've expired, yeah, the count, yeah, could've expired. I'll make, I will make myself a note to check that.
Are the EAC members, like, the boards on the tree there, like, the regional?
Yeah, they should all be on the calendar.
Yeah.
The rest are, I'm just not seeing the EAC.
It probably expired.
The recurrence probably expired, yeah.
I'll look at that, the, uh, this website gives me.
What, so you said there is a plan for a website redesign?
Mm-hmm.
Well.
Well, and that's, so that can be an upcoming.
Let's talk about that.
I was intending to kind of discuss that probably more with the budget, because we, we don't have it budgeted, the money budgeted for that for this year, unless we wanted to think about using ARP funds for it. Um, I did get a proposal already from our IT company to do kind of a
Put it off.
Um, phased upgrade. But it might be worth having a discussion on, I was assuming that, I asked them to put that together, like, how do I avoid doing a whole website overhaul? But it might be worth having a discussion to see if there is interest in doing a whole website overhaul, because to be honest, the back end of our website, I find to be extremely difficult to manage, it's not very, it's not very user-friendly, they tell me WordPress is supposed to be really user-friendly.
It's not.
I do not find it, that, the calendar is a perfect example.
Yeah, it is.
So around, around the time when we were updating it, WordPress changed their backend, and it used to be super user-friendly, and then they updated it to make it more user-friendly, and I hated it. I hated everything they did with it.
It's like, I.
It was, it made managing a website much more difficult.
It's a nightmare, yeah.
But, but it was, it was still an upgrade, it used to have.
Absolutely.
So.
Absolutely.
It needed to be done.
I do not dispute that at all, but it's just.
Had to continue with it.
It's just not.
Yeah. I think we were about halfway done with the upgrade when they changed the format.
Gotcha. Yeah, well, we could talk about that, and I already have that
I love it.
proposal, we could also talk about that in July.
Okay. Put that on the agenda too.
And that would give me an indication of, you know, do we want this to be a bigger project, or a smaller?
Would you, would you prefer to discuss the functionality? I'm advising, I've, I've advised two website redesigns for two different companies at this point, so I
Yeah.
There's a lot of issues, I quite see statements and whether you make, uh, um, accessible for
ADA compliant.
ADA compliant.
That's exactly what I was just gonna say. We have issues with the, it, it's, yeah, and I dealt with that a lot. I did a website redesign at my last municipality.
Which is unusual, which is, which is just strange to me because that was one of the reasons why it was delayed while we were working on it. To make it ADA compliant.
Well, yeah. Well, part of that too is the...
Yeah, we did, we made it compliant, but maybe not.
And now it's not, is that what you're saying?
I think a lot of aspects of it are, but it's also a matter, like, the way that it's been updated.
Since then.
Oh, okay. So, it's the background, it's not, okay.
I'm sure, and we have, like, WordPress works on these plugins, so you have to have these plugins in order to monitor the ADA.
Yeah.
But if you're, if you post, if somebody is posting like a PDF or an image, like a PDF, an image of a PDF to the website, that's not ADA compliant.
No.
But you wouldn't, like...
Right.
And to be clear, there are no regulations to be ADA compliant, it's an independent set of standards.
Right.
That is, there's even a circumstance as to whether a website is a place of public accommodation and needs to be ADA compliant, nobody wants to pose a...
No, but they, but they sue everybody.
And that's exactly what I was gonna say. There were a rash of lawsuits against municipalities for this.
The best we can do is track.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But yes, I...
Is this more of like a, we just want to read you like the structure of it? Like, I have to say, when we did it last time, it was excruciating, like, we had to go through all the commissions, they all had to look at it, like, are we envisioning doing all of that again? Or is it really just like you picking like a better format or something? Or maybe do want to, it just, I have to say, it was excruciating.
It was, it was.
This is, we have lots to talk about, uh...
I think so, yeah.
I think that's what we're gonna have to...
Okay.
Because the problem, we have such a small staff that it needs to be easier to manage. Right now, I'm the only one who can do it, and...
I'm just wondering, like, do we always have to go through all the commissions and everything?
No.
Can you just fix it, like the way you're...
Yeah. Yes.
I don't think they care that much either.
No. I think that they can submit content.
Right.
Yeah.
I think they care because the last website that we had was a mess, and it didn't have a lot of the content that they wanted.
Now it has.
Now it has a lot of the content that they want on it.
I feel like...
The historical commission loves the content that's on their page. The EAC loves the content that's on their page. I think they may want to add stuff, you know, like...
I mean, they could be doing that now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think they care if you tweaked how it came up.
I don't think so. My issue is less than, I mean, the content is an issue, but the content doesn't get kept up with because the website is so difficult to manage and to keep up with. Like, the format of it makes it incredibly difficult, like, the minutes, it's, it's very difficult to put this stuff on there, so that's why it gets outdated. So, for me, the bigger problem is the structure of the website, making it more user-friendly and having it be easier to manage on the back end.
And our commissions will never look at that.
And they'll, and they'll never even, they probably won't even know a difference.
Right, that's why I feel the commission is a lot more...
Just do it. Well, I think we need to talk about it, okay.
Yeah, we need to set parameter, because we could go very small dollar-wise and just kind of Band-Aid what we have. Or we could, you know, go bigger and try to do a, a bigger...
Should we each think about, I mean, doing some web searching and seeing what, or, I'm not talking about nationwide search, looking at other municipal websites.
Yeah, I have a whole, yeah.
See which ones look sharp. And seem to have additional functionality that I was gonna...
And this is what I did, I sat with our IT company and went through these, and that's when I had him put these proposals together, again, in a phased approach. But that proposal still hinges on this, on the back end that we already have, and I would really advocate for getting away from that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can...
Yeah, I think that's a really good topic.
I think we can talk about model ordinance and website in, at the July workshop.
I think it'd be particularly helpful to understand what kind of functionality we feel we don't have compared to some of the...
Yep, and I can, I can show you, yeah, we can, absolutely.
That'd be great.
Yep, absolutely.
And I, and as long as the content is relatively the same for the, the committees and commissions, I don't see, like what Susan said, I don't see that you need to get them involved.
No, the content, and in fact, I would see it giving them more, an additional capability to put more content on there, rather than just like lists of things.
Or you could have one, maybe one workshop meeting where you say we're gonna demo it and invite them all to come, right? Rather than, is, was there like a, were we doing this commission last time?
No, it was basically, what do you, what do you see that's missing on your page? And then they put everything in an email and send it off to our web guy.
It was much more of a content grab than anything.
Yes.
Switch time, so.
And it was.
But I think, yeah, I think...
Yeah.
And, and it was a volunteer that was doing it.
Right.
Yeah.
So, um...
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a lot of, yeah.
Yeah. So...
Great.
Yeah.
All right, so July is planned, August we're tentatively not having.
Correct.
And again, if you guys feel like you need to have an August meeting, don't feel like you need me around. I mean, have one.
Rick's gonna be on vacation too though, right?
Well, so I can be back. I was planning on being back, but if we're not gonna have it, then I could...
Extend.
Extend. It's my birthday, so we're going, we're going to Minneapolis for a concert and then, but I said we have to be back on Tuesday because we have a meeting on Thursday. If we're not gonna have a meeting, I could maybe...
Let's just not have one in August unless it's desperate.
Yes, if something comes up. As of right now, I have nothing on my list.
Or if we have something that's desperate, maybe we could do with the following.
Well, I'm gonna go with, we're tentative for August, and I think we're good to go to the announcements.
Yeah. There's only one, so...
Okay.
We should keep talking about it.
I know. We're just running it into the ground.
I have one announcement. There will be a public meeting hosted by Gilmore and Associates to review plans for the Route 23 sidewalk project on Tuesday, July 12th at 6:00 P.M. in the township meeting room. Property owners who reside along the project corridor have been personally invited, but the general public is also welcome to attend. That's all I've got. Do you, are you guys doing anything?
Give me that date and time again, if you would.
July 12th.
July 12th at 6:00 P.M. Rick, does the fire company have anything going on?
Uh, we're going to Fire College.
I'm sorry?
You're going to what?
Fire College.
Responding to Fire.
Yeah, okay.
I just said you're going to Fire College.
Yeah, I'm going to take this overall.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I do have an announcement, I mean, so it's just resources. There's a, Anne's Heart, which I'm on the board of, that has a, it runs the Heart Center in Fayetteville. They started this year, they always run the Blue Blue Winter Warming Center that, that starts in sometime November when the temperature drops to a certain level, and then it stays open until, until March. This year, they started a new program called CERA, I was looking at the acronym, it's a Center for Emergency Resources, which provides, it's like a heat center, so shelter for people. It's not a, it's not a shelter per se, but we, they offer resources for homeless or people who are having issues to come in, bathe, and get, get meals. The cafe, the Gayville Cafe that's in the Heart Center now provides, can provide some limited meals to them. And there's, we're also partnering with other organizations to provide some health services. So, it's just a resource, so it's a resource for the community. You know, we, especially with rising housing prices in Fayetteville, we're seeing more and more displaced people. They're, they're housing more families than, you know, the ones who now are more lonely and have the kids at the shelter this year. So, yeah. But it's a great organization, and this is an additional service of, you know, anyone who, you know, sees somebody in the township, you can encourage them.
Are they part of Code Blue?
They run Code Blue.
Okay. Um, one of the drives that Jim Hennessy does in the, late, late in the year, um, he does for Code Blue. So, I'm sure he's very, very familiar with the services.
We were the only shelter, the only drop-in shelter, we did not need to go through the whole bureaucratic process of getting placement. We were the only shelter in Chester County that was open for people.
Wow.
Where you could just walk in, shut the door, and get a bed.
Who's, um, who's the sister that's there, the nun?
There, that, you're thinking of St. Mary's, uh, St. Mary's Shelter for Families on the north side?
Yeah. Isn't that part of the same thing? Oh, okay, I'm in the wrong place then, never mind.
Anne's Heart is in Sacred Heart Church on Church Street.
Oh, okay.
It's in Sacred Heart.
Okay. I'm in the wrong place.
Okay.
Any other announcements?
That would be great stuff to put on a website.
Yeah, blue, yeah, blue website, they're made face looks like.
Any public comment? Okay, come on up, John.
John Maras, once again.
Yeah.
Uh, it was interesting to hear about the discussion on Scan Tech. What's these townships' policy on the videos? Are they retained for a number of years? Are they destroyed after minutes? Uh, what exactly, because again, I was gonna ask that question, but being that you had the Scan Tech discussion, how are the videos kept? Because you did sign a new contract with the video people. What's the retention policy for the township?
Have they been ever gone down?
I don't think so.
I think we still have the original ones up.
They're all on there.
The earliest ones on municipal meeting. They're hosted.
There's a law requiring it, and we have a resolution somewhere about how long things must be kept. I think you can digitalize them, and that satisfies the requirement, but okay, I don't remember.
I believe technically we're not required to keep them past the approval of the minutes. However, we have them, they're on the website.
I understand that from another entity. What you just said, Lori, is what that entity is doing. After the minutes are officially approved, the videos are destroyed.
That's technically, that's, that's what the law requires, because the minutes are the official record of the meeting.
But Sean just eyeballed me, and he said that they keep them for one year.
But, so the township only requires what you said, Lori, or it goes beyond that then?
So, we are doing in excess of what's required.
Right.
But I would have to look, I don't know offhand.
And does that cost anything extra to do what you're doing? Because there's a transparency, you know, if someone comes back here five years from now or whatever, you know, you have your records that you're doing now with, with the scanning, but what about the videos? I know minutes are minutes.
The minutes are what's, the minutes are what we are legally required. That's the, that's the legal record of the meetings. The, the videos, we're not required to record the meetings if we choose to record the meetings. I would have to double-check our video retention policy. I'm not sure offhand what kind of resolution or if any we have one. But technically, the, the, PH, I think it's in the PHMC that, that tells us...
There's a requirement for document retention.
Yeah.
Different types of documents, different ages.
Right.
Hold them forward. I don't think there's any...
Most, most regulations don't keep up with technology, and that probably applies to the video retention policies, because it's, I mean, that's, that's what we see with lots of things, is like recordings and things don't, don't get mentioned by state laws and things.
We don't have to mention the fact that we don't...
Not typically.
We don't even have to have them recorded.
No.
Right, but if you have it, I'm not saying for transparency issues, uh...
Well, we do have it back all the way through June 2017, I just checked. So, for us, we have a...
Well, congratulations to the township, because they're doing way, way more than what is required.
Than what's required.
But yeah, yeah.
That doesn't mean to destroy them right away now.
Yeah.
Okay.
We are not destroying them right away, though.
Okay.
Not right away, but...
Okay.
You can bring it to our extension.
That's true.
Sorry about that.
Okay, Lori, make sure that they're all destroyed up to next month or last month. I'm joking, John, I'm joking.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Dean, is there any reason that an alt...